Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please.
Follow Commissioner Austin.
Please join me in the Pledge and Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Austin. Can we please have a roll call?
Yes. Chair Vesani and Commissioner Rose are excused. Commissioner Austin?
Here.
Brown?
Present.
Scheffler?
Here.
Sheef?
Here.
Chair, uh, Stahera?
Here. Thank you very much. All right, next item on the agenda. This is the start of the new fiscal year, so, uh, Community Development Director Jimenez, please deliver the report on reorganizing.
Yes, it is that time of year again. That year flew by. It is time to reorganize, as the commission knows every year. You, as a body, reorganize, selecting a new chair and a vice chair to serve in the upcoming fiscal year. Normally, the tradition of the commission has been for the vice chair to be elected as the chair, and then the new vice chair would be, um, based on the, there's a whole bunch of criteria. This year, the, the person who fit the criteria is Commissioner Sheaf, who is the, uh, commissioner that has served the longest without serving as chair. So, uh, staff would recommend that Commissioner Stahera be the nominee of the chair and Commissioner Sheaf be nominated the vice chair. So that concludes my report, and, uh, if, uh, the commission concurs, we just would need a motion, um, for that.
All right, thanks, Director.
So moved.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, there's a second. Can I take a roll? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Austin?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Scheffler?
Yes.
Sheef?
Yes.
Stahera?
Yes. All right, thank you very much. I guess that means I move from acting chair to chair. Congratulations to my vice chair. Also, I just wanted to thank, um, outgoing Chair Vesani for his service. He did an excellent job over the last year, and, uh, we're happy to have him still here on the, on the commission. All right, uh, next item on the agenda is introducing our newest member. I'd like to introduce, uh, Jale Brown. Jale, if you want to say anything, you're welcome to.
Sure. Thank you, uh, so much to the council or the mayor for appointing me. Um, I'm looking forward to a fabulous, um, three years sitting on this wonderful body, and thank you all for having me.
All right, it's great to have you. Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes, from our regular meeting on June 12th, uh, 2024. If there are no corrections, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Very good. We'll now take a vo- a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'm gonna abstain.
Very good. With that, the motion is approved. Okay. Now we're moving on to the, uh, public input portion of the, of the meeting. So at this time, citizens who wish to discuss any items not on the agenda may speak to the commission. Uh, as a reminder, the commission may not discuss or vote on the items not on the agenda, but we can take this information and use it to inform our, our future deliberations uh, or requests to city staff. So do I have anyone in the audience who would wish to speak? All right, uh, seeing none, the public input portion of the meeting is now closed, and we can move on to the public hearings. So we have one public hearing agenda item tonight, PH1, which includes ordinance number 2024-07 and Planning Commission Resolution Number 2024-0005, City of Monrovia as the applicant. It's a request to amend the Monrovia Municipal Code to allow governmental services as a permitted use in the historic commercial downtown zone. So, uh, I believe, Director Jimenez, uh, can we please have the staff report?
Yes, uh, thank you, Chair. As you, uh, recall, last year, the, the city council, uh, purchased the building at 324 South Myrtle Avenue with the intent to use it for the temporary community center during the impending, uh, remodel of the community center. Uh, and then, uh, if, if everything works out well, then City Hall will be next on the list of, um, buildings to be renovated. Anytime that a city purchases or sells real property, the Planning Commission must review that, uh, proposal to ensure that it is in conformity with the city's general plan. The Planning Commission did review, uh, the sale. There, there was no conflict with any provisions in the general plan, and you did find that it conforms to the general plan, and you made that determination last November. This allowed that sale to, to proceed. With that, the, the city then, uh, purchased the, the building. But at the time when the, uh, purchase went through, as well as the general plan conformity, it was stated that we would have to come back and do a, an amendment to the zoning ordinance that would allow governmental services to be, uh, a permitted use in, in Old Town. Right now, they are not in a permitted use in the HCD or historic commercial downtown zone. So that's essentially what this ordinance does tonight is a pretty limited ordinance in its scope. Um, it does one thing. It adds governmental services to the list of uses that are allowed in the HCD zone. Now, the HCD zone is our, one of our downtown zones. The HCD zone runs, is the Myrtle frontages from Foothill to all of, uh, excluding, uh, Library Park and the Foothill Park Plaza. All other lots that front on Myrtle Avenue are part of the HCD zone. The side streets are different, are different zoning classifications. So this would only impact the HCD zone. And so what the ordinance did, would do, would be to add governmental services as a permitted use, and this would be permitted both on the ground floor and non-ground floor. Uh, HCD zone is very unique, is that we do regulate, um, vertically as well as horizontally. So we do have, um, you know, if, we have allowable uses in the basement or on a, on second floors, different than we do on the first floor. So this would allow governmental services on both the ground floor and non-ground floor uses. Um, this, um, would have then allowed the city to utilize that building for the temporary community services, um, location, as well as, uh, future administrative offices for City Hall, uh, in the event that City Hall is under remodel. And looking at the use classification, it is similar in intensity to other uses that are already permitted by right. Um, office uses are permitted by right. Um, entertainment facilities are permitted in, in the Old Town. So again, we think from an intensity standpoint and from a, a compatibility standpoint, it is, it's appropriate to allow governmental services in the Old Town. This does not change any of the development standards, so if there was going to be new development, um, it, they would be, have to comply with all the development standards that are already in the, in the zoning code that apply to the HCD zone. So it doesn't change any of that. It's just modifying the use chart. So that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions with the commission.
All right, questions from commissioners?
Just, just one question. Would that apply, Craig, to other governmental agencies? And let's say, example, like county wanted to open an operation. Would that allow them to do that, or would that come back as a conditional use permit?
It, it would, it would, they would be, they would be allowed, because they would be, well, it depends on what they're doing. If they fit that, um, definition of governmental services, so office uses, what they wouldn't be able to do is like maintenance uses or utility uses. That's, and those are different classifications. With that being said, state and county agencies are not always, uh, obligated to follow our zoning regulations, so, um, there's, there's, then there's that.
So they could technically come in without that ordinance?
There's a potential that they could.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I have one, and I can't remember if we discussed this at the time of the purchase, but, um, how does parking, uh, for the community center and for the, um, uh, City Hall work now? And how will it work if those uses are relocated to the, to this new building?
Well, both, both uses, the community center does have a very small parking lot, but most of the parking is already in Old Town, so, um, it's, it's not going to impact that very much. We are, as part of the renovation, we'll be looking at some, some parking mitigation. City Hall already uses the parking in Old Town, so again, that, it's, it's not going to, significantly impact the, the parking, um, in Old Town.
Good to know. Any other questions? Okay, uh, this is the time and place for public input regarding PH1. So we will accept testimony in the following order. The applicant, which, uh, I believe the city is considered the applicant, so I think we've already heard the city's testimony. Then persons in favor, then persons with concerns, and then the applicant will have a chance to respond. Do we have anyone wishing to speak? All right. Given that, uh, the public testimony portion of the hearing is closed, uh, so now is the time for the commission to debate or discuss if there's anything else.
I think it's a reasonable request. If there's no other comment, I'm, I can, uh, make a motion.
Yeah, there's no further discussion. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, I move that we adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number PCR 2024-0005.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, uh, roll call vote, please.
Yes, Commissioner Austin?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Scheffler?
Yes.
Sheef?
Yes.
Stahera?
Yes. All right.
All right. This is a recommendation to the planning commission, so there is no appeal. And, uh, we anticipate this will go to before the council, um, at their meeting, their first meeting in August.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, so next, since we have no administrative reports, let's proceed to the Community Development Director report.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, we have a, a number of things that we're going to do tonight. The first thing up on the, the docket is, is a bricks and mortar presentation on vehicle mile traveler, VMT. Now, I'll let John introduce, um, that topic, and then we have a consultant here that will teach you everything that you need to know about VMT.
Thank you, Craig, and good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Yes, the item you have tonight is regarding a bricks and mortar, uh, type of presentation to talk about the way that the city, uh, evaluates transportation impacts for the California Environmental Quality Act. Next month, staff plans to bring a resolution to you for review and recommendation to the city council about some changes to the way we study transportation impacts regarding the, uh, California Environmental Quality Act. Just for some background for the commission, um, projects, um, when they come into the city, we don't just look at, um, congestion anymore as part of an environmental impact. Uh, at, at some point, the state decided that, um, the amount of time you're waiting at a traffic light is not really considered an environmental quality issue. It may be a quality of life issue, which we still do look at in terms of, um, can, traffic congestion. We still require, uh, traffic reports to see what projects will do to our streets and intersections. But in terms of the California Environmental Quality Act, it's all about the number of miles a car needs to travel to a project site. And the way we study that is through the vehicle miles traveled method, VMT. And it's a, it's a method that we use to, um, first of all, we want to make sure we're trying to lower vehicle miles traveled, uh, to our project sites, because this in turn reduces greenhouse gas emissions. There are also some planning benefits to this as well. We want to try to place new residential development near shopping and employment. We want people trying to take other modes of transportation rather than driving. We want them bicycling and walking and taking public transit. That's the, the ideal. Um, we also, we also want to place our employment centers near places where people live and work and have access to public transit. So, um, with the passage of SB 743 in 2013, all cities were required to adopt these VMT-based transportation requirements by July 1st, 2020. And it's very difficult for any one city to do this, because it requires a lot, a lot of data, a lot of socioeconomic data, the kind of data we get from the US Census. It also requires some sophisticated computer modeling, um, information as well. So, um, thankfully, the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments was organizing all the cities to, to, to prepare these VMT methods for all of its member cities, and Monrovia joined them. And thankfully, um, before the deadline, we, we, we were able to get our VMT recommendations to the Planning Commission on June 17th, 2020, and then the city council adopted our VMT requirements on July 7th, 2020. Later that year, um, the, the city also were, was able to get a VMT screening tool that allows project applicants and cities to, uh, plug in some numbers of a project and determine what the VMT will be, what the VMT impact will be. So it's been a very valuable tool, tool to the city and for our applicants. So this computer simulation modeling that we've been using is sort of outdated. They've gone from this, um, uh, transportation demand model to this new activity-based model. And not only that, the data that was used to support our VMT requirements has changed too. It's been updated, uh, to the very latest, uh, data that's collected through the Southern California Association of Governments. So with all that, uh, the San Gabriel Valley of Council Governments is now getting its member cities back together again to, um, help them, um, update their VMT requirements, taking into account the new modeling and the new data that's, that's come up. I am very pleased to introduce, um, our expert transportation planner, um, Fatima Ranafar. Uh, she has a PhD in, uh, transportation science, and, uh, we're gonna run through some slides and explain what VMT is in a little more detail. And the idea is to have a discussion about this tonight, so when we come back with our resolution, um, we, we'd be able to make a good, solid recommendation to the city council. Fatima?
Good evening. Thank you for having me. So, uh, my name is Fatima, as, uh, mentioned, and I'm working with my firm, firm peers, and I've been the pleasure of working with the cities in the San Gabriel Valley and doing this presentation around, so, um, it has been exciting to go into, at least, I did eight or nine city council presentations and see how different, different cities are, and it's nice to see, so thank you for having me. Today, we want to talk about a little bit about why we are updating, what are the data have been used, and what is the recommendation. But, um, a little bit going back to the legislation, as John mentioned, the legislation that driving all of these, uh, procedures is called SB 743, and basically, uh, it changed the metric how the, uh, environmental impacts were assessed. This is only affected transportation-related metrics. There is all the other 17 categories of impact under the SEQA for each of the development project, but this only talks about the VMT impact. At the heart of it was, they were trying to prevent a sprawl. So they wanted to build more dense, more mixed use, and be close to transit, and reduce the vehicle mile travel. So over time, you, in theory, reducing congestion, you're using more transit, and, uh, developments happen in areas where we call them low VMT. Uh, we made a little one-minute videos. I think it described this whole concept of VMT that we're talking about. We presented at various city councils, and they liked it. It's, so let's spend a few, one minute watching this.
What is VMT? VMT, or vehicle miles traveled, refers to the distance that a car travels, regardless of how many passengers are in the car. So this car, traveling one mile, would generate one VMT. And four vehicles, traveling 10 miles, would generate 40 VMT. To understand how much VMT a person generates on a typical weekday, it's useful to map their travel throughout the day. In this example, Jess starts the day at home, drives to the coffee shop two miles away, and then heads to work, which is 10 miles from the coffee shop. After a day at the office, Jess returns home 11 miles away. Later, Jess heads out and drives one mile to the gas station to fill up, before driving another three miles to the grocery store, and then makes the two-mile trip back home. By adding together the miles driven, it has shown that Jess has generated 29 VMT for the entire day. This VMT can be further categorized into the individual trip purposes that motivated each leg of the trip. VMT can be organized into three typical trip purposes: home-to-work, or HW; home-to-other, or HO; and other-to-other, or OO. This organization is helpful in understanding that trips to and from work tend to generate the most VMT, because people are willing to drive longer distances as the benefit of the trip increases. Do you have other questions about VMT that you would like answered? Let us know.
So, hope, just helpful, put things in the context. I think I lost my connection. Oh, wrong before. Okay. So, um, how do we calculate this VMT thing? Unfortunately, this VMT is not like a traffic count, and we go out and put a counter or camera and say, okay, 100 people, cars crossed here, this is 100. So, for better or worse, consultants get paid to build these fancy models and give you something that calls VMT. The basic or more, uh, older way of calculating, uh, or simulating, uh, travel demands was basically saying, person goes from A to B, and this is called a trip. So every origin to every destination, as you see on the top right corner, calls a trip. And as we got fancier, and we got more data, and we got, uh, more computer powers, we thought about that, our trips are linked together. So it's not just I go to work. It matters after work what I go. I pick up my daughters. So if I drive to work, I'm gonna drive to pick up my daughter. If I take the transit to work, I may take an Uber to drive my daughter. But these are linked together, and there is this relationship between how we arrange our activities, so that's why it's called activity-based, and how we put them or lay them down on the ground between different destinations. So the regional NPL used to have this model called trip-based, or what we call in the, the travel demand models. And the demand part reflect to how much demand we have for making trips. Over the time, they upgraded, and in 2020, SCAG adopted this activity-based model, which changed some of the assumptions. So the numbers are not exactly comparable. We used to say trip to home, trip to works, but now all of your trips associated to your work, now it's called work tours. So the numbers and the mathematics are slightly different. So we need to update all of our assumptions, so it will be apple-to-apple comparison for any of these, uh, new development that come to place. So, following to that, uh, as RTP updated every four years now, we have the 2024 RTP. The baseline information changes. You have new land use, you have new social economic, you have new, uh, assumptions related to how the population moves, new jobs. So all of these things bake into, uh, this model to develop these three metrics, basically. So, uh, on the table, you're seeing three generation of the RTP. That comes from the 2016 RTP, 2020 RTP, and the current one, that is 2024 RTP. So the numbers between 2020 and 2024 RTP, the assumptions behind them are different, so, uh, sorry, between 2020 and 2016 RTP, they are different. 2016 is the last year that we have the trip-based model. So 2020 and 2024 are comparable, and you see that there is some sort of a big jump from, uh, 2016 to 2020. It's not because stuff are changed drastically, it's because the way we are doing our accounting changed. So we are counting things differently, basically. But, um, the two metrics, uh, that we talked tonight is VMT per employee. That's basically how many miles a VM, an employee generates when you're adding a job. So if you're adding an office, there are 10 employees, all of them gonna drive, and the average trip length is 10, this is gonna be your VMT. If half of them taking transit, it divides by two. The map shows the areas, uh, in your city that have 15% below the regional average. If they are 15% below the regional average, by SEQA guideline, the OPR defined them a low VMT zone. So if you're located in a low VMT zone, that means you're in a transit-accessible areas or where there are mixed use, or for however things are connected to each other, you get, you can get a screened out from the project, from the VMT analysis. That doesn't mean that you're a screened out from all the other 17 or 16 metrics of the SEQA requirement. This is just about, uh, transportation. And if you are on a high, uh, higher, uh, VMT zone, it means, depends on the size of the project, you need to do, provide mitigations, travel, like the TDM measures, whether you provide transit, uh, bus, uh, cars, or that kind of measures, to carpool programs to reduce your VMT. So this is on the commercial uses. Where's your one? So, uh, we don't have a, I thought we have a picture for. The other, uh, the other, mm, metric is the VMT per, uh, residential. So if you have a housing project, now each new, uh, each new resident generate the VMT. Similar, if this is below the 15% of the regional average, it's in the, uh, VMT efficient areas. So we calculated all of these metrics, and, uh, we recommended to the cities that there are three ways to set the threshold, and let's pick the highest one. And for the VMT per employee, we recommend to pick the regional one, not the citywide one. So that will be consistent with the OPR guideline. So, uh, right now, we are, I think we have two or three more cities that we do this presentation, and once all the cities are adopted, uh, we update the numbers that is in the VMT screening tool, and this goes live for your applications. Any questions?
Yeah, just a couple. The, so, um, just a clarification. The VMT per employee and the VMT per resident, uh, that refers to, the VMT per employee refers to employees who work in the city, and then?
In the new development. So if you have a new project, like, let's say it's an office, you expect to have five employees, the VMT per employee for those. And it compares to the average of the baseline that if you're looking at the region, then all of the people work in the region.
I see. And do you have a, of number for what the VMT per resident is? Since we didn't see a chart for that one.
Do you have it?
It was on here.
Yeah, I thought the roses. We can provide it to you, yeah. But, that's probably a good thing.
That'll be included in your next, um, when we recommend the city council resolution, those recommendations will be in there.
Great.
Yeah, it was the same as the one you had before. It didn't change much, but, um, but I thought I saw that. There was a slide similar to this one with the maps.
I believe the, this was included, because it was a major change.
This one has a change, so if you see that there is a This one hasn't changed. So if you see that there is a little area there that in the previous one, it was high V M T, now it is a low V M T. So the other one stays the same.
If I if I may, the great thing about Monrovia is that where our housing, when it is built here, it's so close to shopping centers and employment that it really is not going to be a V M T issue.
Great. Other questions? Commissioner Austin?
Yep. What would be the perfect, if if there was such thing on like that that chart? What 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 are we striving for? Less than 15%? We don't want, definitely don't want higher than average, but is there a mix that we look for?
Uh, in terms of being in a perfect world. So you have to bike everywhere.
Okay. Get out of the car is the perfect world.
Get out of the car.
Zero.
No parking, free parking. So all of these three hour parkings goes away.
Okay, got it, got it. So each iteration or version is more um technically sound or improving on that. On the initial one from like 16 to 24 is a is an improvement. So our planners can have a better idea.
The idea is to help them get through this, you know, the mitigations for the V M Ts, it's called uh T D M measure. So you want to manage these kinds of demands, whether by transit, by bike, a sharing program, bike facility, active transportation. So that's the whole process. So let's know more about how things work so we can provide more options.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Chief?
Yeah, I've got a question. I've got, I live seven minutes from this from here, okay? My office is two blocks. I do a lot of work in Monrovia related to construction. Is that considered low V M T? I don't leave the city for for the most part.
So um, the math is a little bit different. Okay. So the way it works is when we calculate what is the V M T generated by this city, we look at the residents of the city. So that will be the V M T generated by this residents of this city. You may not live in Monrovia, but you work in Monrovia. So that would be the V M T generated by the workers who work at the city.
So being that I live here, my office is here.
And you walk everywhere?
Do I walk everywhere? That'd be a tough one. It'd be real tough. So that's not considered low then?
The low is relative. The low is not you yourself. The low is looking at everybody in this area and see what the other people like.
So as an individual, that scenario is not low.
No, as an individual, you're contributing to creating the lowering the regional average. But the metric is a regional.
Thank you.
Uh, the good example I have is I do a lot of work in city of Santa Monica. And city of Santa Monica, it has um, half of the people who live there work elsewhere. And half of the the jobs filled by people who don't work there. The ideal scenario is, okay, people, you live here, you work here. But that's not usually happen like so.
So so like in in this case, for this example, um, for the 2024 Monrovia number 34.71, if uh you're, if you're a worker and your daily V M T is less than 85% of that, so that would be 29.5, then you would be in the blue category here, right? Less than 15%. Oh, I guess that's regional, but
So it's a
Just just as an example, if you know, if uh that's what we're saying, right? If you uh work in Monrovia and you drive less than 29.5 miles per day.
You potentially live in the area, in the blue area, or your job is in the blue area, right? But the the people who work in the red areas, they are
Typically exceed
Exceeding that.
That regional average. Commissioner Chief. Oh, uh, we had Commissioner Chief next.
Uh, two questions. Will we be running uh analysis on V N T um ongoing? With with different kind of mathematics?
So the R T P updated every four years, right? Uh, you can, and when you're doing a new um project development or the Sequoia document, the recommendation is the date of N O P for any development project is the date that you're doing the analysis for that project. Let's say I'm an applicant. I want to develop a 200 unit houses. Today is July 24, right? So for the Sequoia recommendation, you're required to put all the data as best as available or as best as you can get for 2024, right?
Using that particular mathematical model for that year?
Using the available that. So if you let it like uh and since the R T P updated every four years, there is this expectation or there is this, if there is a significant change, right? 2224 had the whole pandemic projection in it. So if you look at the S G A C projections for 2050 versus what they project for 2040 is almost half. So they slow down the growth of the region because they see how it affected.
Is this being applied to the entire county?
The model?
Yes.
It's the in six county for the S G A C. It's the S G A C has Riverside, San Bernardino, Ventura, L A and Orange.
And what are the cities supposed to do with this information? Is it part of planning? How do you see the being implemented?
So the the important part of it is which project get screened out. Of this analysis, let's say you have a, I don't know, 100 unit affordable houses in the low V M T area. So the city knows that this project can be screened out from V M T analysis. So you don't have to review all the V M T, you don't have to request all the V M T analysis. But let's say you get a big project in a high V M T area and you want to know what's the impact of it. And also you want to make sure that the developers put together the proper mitigations for that, right? So that's a screening piece of it, I think. That's a important piece um for the planning commission. The other piece that I see is um running a fee program, basically. So if you have project that you want to have an impact fee and you your city is interested, like a lot of the cities are putting together a fee programs. So an individual project cannot mitigate their impact because they can afford to put this bike lane there, but they can contribute to this bank or this project that the city putting together. So that's another way that the city utilizing this to fund or develop these fee programs um for their cities.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brown?
Uh, how do electric vehicles play into the V M T calculation?
That's the most popular question. So the, it doesn't basically. Because a V M T is a V M T, whether it's electric or whether it's hydrogen or whatever. A vehicle mile is vehicle mile. So and of course, when we talk about this metric was introduced with the effort of reducing greenhouse gas. And then you say, okay, my car is electric, right? So it doesn't create this emission and that's true. But the V M T was not just for greenhouse gas in, it has a development, it has a planning implications. So you want to have more infill development, near transit developments. So whether it's electric or non-electric, you you want to reduce that type of mode and shift to more active transportation or transit. So for that reason, this is not making a change. But when you do the air quality analysis, yes, that that become a different. But yeah, there is a lot of controversy going about that whole electric.
One of my cars is electric and I'm like, oh, I don't contribute to this at all, but guess I do.
Yeah.
Um, can you tell us a little bit more about the underlying data that was used for this 2024 update? You said that that the last four year period included the pandemic. Behavior was a lot different during that time.
Um, so this is a little bit about how a S G A C R T Ps work. And so when they say it's a 2024 R T P, the base year of that is 2019. It's usually four years before. Because in order to, this is the year that the R T P publish, right? So they published it in 2024, but they don't have the data for 2024 in 2024. So they start in 2019, collecting all the data and all the, you know, Department of Finance, all the projection, the Department of um Workforce, all of these get. So the model in theory validated and compared to all the data from 2019. And then they do a near term projection for 2024.
Okay.
To do that 2024 projection, this cycle because of the pandemic, they did a lot of surveys because work from home was a new animal. A lot of uh jobs shifted around and we had a different growth rate. We had jobs that moved out of the state. We have families relocation. So they did a lot of survey to come up with assumptions for this near term projection. Then they generate this 2024. But they, in terms of like making what get validated or what compared to the real data, it was a 2019.
I see. Okay, thank you. Uh, are there other V M, you you said uh the S G A C model is used in six counties. Are there other V M T models out there that are used other in other parts of the state?
Uh, so all of the M P Os required to have their R T P every four years. So like San Dag, San Diego County is another M P O. They have their own. But beside M P Os, some cities decided to have their own model, like city of L A developed their own model. Santa Monica has its own model. Many like O C T A, uh Orange County developed their own model, even though there is an S G A C model. But it's it's an effort to maintain and it's costly because it's not a one time thing, like you have to keep doing it. And it's good you pay us, but at the end, you know, there are better ways. So a lot of smaller cities choose to go with the regional models. So but you can decide to make your own travel demand models. There is an statewide model which is very large. So a state uses that metric for the V M T at the regional level.
Commissioner Chief?
Well, will the V M T model uh eventually drive real estate higher? Uh, will it make affordable housing less affordable with these fees that you're talking about?
That's an interesting question. So the way these models work, they don't have feedback to the land use projection. That would be very great because you think that, okay, if I put a transit station here, right? It's gonna affect the the real estate value around these areas. But our models are not that complicated. So we have a transportation model and then we have a land use model. So a S G A C has a whole different team. They call them land use planning models. And they they project the uh how the land use change over time. And that becomes an input to the transportation model. So when I was doing my fish years ago, there's a lot of exercise of having this feedback from transportation to land use and how transportation affect land use and put all of them in one model. But eventually it becomes a very cumbersome. So the economists do their land use projections. It gets input to the to the transportation model. So when they do that land use projection, I'm sure they consider this kind of effect. But um, I'm not, I I'm not, I'm not knowledgeable on that side of the.
Thank you.
Commissioner Austin?
This might be towards staff, but we used some of this modeling on some of our recent projects. Our larger ones down in Station Square Transit.
Yeah, so since we've, what 2020 is when we adopted ours. So since 2020, we have used V M T for our Sequoia analysis. And and really that for for planning and for the planning commission, it really, it's it's about environmental analysis. So we're using this model to determine how we evaluate from an environmental standpoint. Is there environmental impact or not based on on V M T? As opposed to traffic model, which is the L O S. That's from environmental standpoint, from Sequoia, traffic doesn't matter anymore. It's it's all about the vehicle miles traveled. It's about reducing greenhouse gases. So really, it's either it screens out no nothing more or, oh, we have a, we have a V M T issue here. We need more information. So that then that analysis is done. And that based based on that analysis, that determines what kind of mitigation will have to be done and adopted by the city to approve that project. And I think thinking about, and and I'm not a, I I I'm not an expert on economics, but generally what, you know, um, as Fatima said, the purpose of V M T really is to reduce sprawl. It's really to encourage good planning. And, you know, I think Monrovia can pat itself on the back. We've done a lot of good planning. So the areas where we're seeing growth is areas that are close to transportation, close to jobs. So we're we're reducing that V M T and we've done that through land use policies. How how does it impact the cost? I I think you could probably anecdotally say, well, if you're building in a low V M T area because there's transit, then you're going to reduce the fees, you're going to reduce the impacts, you hopefully um some other costs that may be associated with development because you're building in these low V M T areas. So we want to encourage that. And and so like, we want to create a model that really, again, encourages that type of development moving forward for for Monrovia.
And uh, is it having the intended effect that, you know, is it reducing sprawl? Like, do we have data to support that conclusion?
That's also good question. Uh, so it's only been like since 2020 that the states really forcing it. And it got disrupted by whole pandemic stuff to see uh, you know, have a real observed data. But some cities are really monitoring their uh, you know, transit ridership, their new develop developments uh to get how things are changing. But one thing you can look at is you have these areas that have lower V M T, right? If you look at the characteristics of them, you would see they share these characteristics. They have, they are walkable, they have transit access, they are mixed use. So if you're looking at these areas in a big context, you would hope that if we are increasing that type of development, the red areas over time may also move toward that. But I haven't seen, you know, the data usually have a lag, right? So they haven't been a lot of that robust development to do before and after kind of a study. Besides, the whole transit system got messed up, right? The whole pandemic, they're starting to revamp it, get it back up to speed.
Yeah, it's hard to have a clean experiment when you live in the real world. Um, I I had another question about um the triggers or the thresholds that we use uh for V M T to determine if there are mitigations required. Those are relative thresholds, like relative to regional numbers and not absolute thresholds? Is that correct?
So um, it's at your discretion. So you don't really have to say, I want to be 15% below the region. We have like Santa Barbara, they say, we want to be just no more than existing. Some cities are more extreme. They say we want to be 18% or 16.8% below. So it's that part, there is no legislation or requirement, you gotta do this. But uh, in 2020, when O P R put their guidance together and A R B did some math and say, if everybody do this 15% below, then by 20 something, 35 or 45, we are start to see the effect of G H G reductions. Of course, not everybody doing it. So then they say, no, 15% is not enough. The new number is 16.8. And I heard that they are updating that number again because we are not catching up as they said.
Uh, Commissioner Jeffler?
Question. Craig's directed up both yourself and Craig. Craig just touched on the goal is greenhouse gases. And you spoke about earlier about your left free car and why it does not, what what is it, what is the difference with that? Why does not um Jolly, if I'm pronouncing that right, um touched on, she has electric car, but it doesn't count. Or it does count still as V M T and Craig just said the ultimate goal is is to cut out the greenhouse gases. What's, where's, where's the um?
How do they differentiate? So
Correct. How how is that?
The, these are all for the Sequoia document, right? In the Sequoia document, there is a whole section on air quality. So as you're building more charging, more electric vehicle adoption, you get the credit under the uh air quality section. So that's a whole separate math and air quality has a different threshold and qualities. What we are talking about is only transportation impact, right? The intention was to think when they changed from L O S to um V M T. Number one, G H G reduction, number two, uh more efficient development and preventing a sprawl. So. That. Cap or sort of putting a V M T as a metric. Uh, the intention was it will reduce a sprawl development. Because if you go to the suburb or, you know, more uh outside areas. Intuitive like you're generating more V M T because you need to have access to destination. But if you are in a mixed use area near transit. You're. You have access to this destination, so you are, you having option to reduce, let, to produce less V M T.
Thank you.
And this, this might be getting into a, a whole different bricks and mortar on Sequa perhaps. But um, in the case of like a high V M T uh finding. Wh- what are the usual mitigations that are suggested or applied?
There is a whole list of what it calls CAP COA. This document, they did a lot of research and come up with, I guess, twenty or something list of mitigations. Because Sequa requires substantial evidence, you can't just say that I do this and it's mitigated, right? So you either need to have substantial evidence, so they went through this and say that, okay. If you are providing um transit cars. Or if you're providing shuttle services or you're providing carpool programs. It can reduce X percent of the V M T. The hard part is for residential uses, there is almost very little ways of mitigating residential V M T. Um. So that's why there's a lot of push on developing near transit or T P A areas where it is already low V M T.
So that might in fact uh prohibit a certain project from going forward if it violates?
Have the discretion to do in a statement of override and still allow, even though they are creating an impact. So it's at the city's discretion that uh doing a statement of override. The other good thing about V M T is when we had the L O S word. And we say that, okay, foothill barvert, you got congested. And the L O S goes to F, so we need more capacity here. The capacity was needed at foothill barvert, it doesn't help if you add a lane to another roadway. But the V M T, the way you see it's measured is at the region. So some of the cities that are more sensitive and they don't want to do use this override and they wanna make sure their project. They start this project that, okay, if the region lowers the V M T, if you put a bike lane. It's not next to your house, but it's next to somebody else's house. So as a region, our V M T will go down, even though this house. Housing development itself may not directly benefit. So you see a lot more, I would say equitable and accessible type of project coming up. Uh, it also comes with the challenges because you have to convince the people that, you know. You're developers, you may not get benefit for it, but you mitigate your V M T through paying for this project that is not at your block.
Thank you. Any other questions? We're jazzed about traffic, this is exciting. Um, okay, uh, if there are no other questions, is that the conclusion of this particular bricks and mortar?
Yeah, so I guess eh eh, we, we will bring back for your consideration next, next month, the, the full um.
Resolution.
Pro- proposal for updating our, our V M T. Again, the, the purpose tonight was to. Let it soak, it's a lot of information, it's a very, eh, very different way of thinking about things. Um, and then we'll bring that back to you. So in the meantime, you know, over this next month, as, as you're, you know, dreaming about V M T, send us your questions. We can make sure that we, we address that in, in our, our staff report coming back to you next month. But I think again, one of the things, a couple of things, just kind of takeaways that I, I, I wanna emphasize is. In Monrovia, most of our projects are exempt from Sequa anyway, they fit, fit a categorical exemption, so they're already screened out. That we don't even have to, we don't have to go there. So we're really talking about larger projects where we have to do some sort of environmental review. Then we decide that we have to figure out, okay, does it screen out of V M T or not? Because of where most of our development is occurring, it's probably going to screen out of V M T. But in those situations where it doesn't, we wanna make sure that we have accurate numbers. That are gonna give us, you know, realistic or is close to realistic um. Estimate of, of what, what are those vehicle miles traveled. Um, and again, I wanna make sure that um, what we talk about. Greenhouse gases and V M T, they're two different metrics, but the, but the idea is if you lower your V M T. Then your greenhouse gases will go down, it's not, it's not measuring greenhouse gases. That's a whole nother section in Sequa is, is focused on greenhouse gases. Um, so I think those were kind of the, a few points I wanted to make, but again, if the, the commission has any other questions for our consultant. Um, or if you have any questions for us, um, please send them over the, over the next month and we'll, we'll get all that worked out. But again, thank you for your, all of the great questions tonight because the. We, you know, we're not extras, but we deal with this on a, on a daily basis and it's still like, oh yeah, that, so we get it.
If I may add something, um, the whole, there are concerns, many cities say, okay, what happened to our con? What we talk here is a very specific document called Sequa. And you have your general plan, you have the permitting, you have the M O Us and you have all kinds of tools. To manage the congestion at the city, a lot of the cities put some congestion measure in their general plan. In consistency with the general plan is one of the Sequa's questions. So um, it's not thrown out of the, you know, the whole L O S, it's not thrown, it's still a measure that. City traffic engineers are interested and you need to maintain, it's just streamlined and it's out of the Sequa document. But if it comes, it's there.
Thank, thank you for mentioning that, yeah, I, uh, that actually reminded me of a question that I wrote down when John uh was speaking. Um, I, I do want the public to know that, you know, we're not just ignoring uh traffic congestion and traffic concerns by. Uh focusing on V M T for this particular aspect of, of Sequa. Um, I think, John, you mentioned that we still do traffic reports to determine those kind of impacts on the city infrastructure. And on the rest of the city residents, right? Could you maybe just expand on that a little bit?
That is correct, whenever a project does come in, we do require that we uh take a look and make sure that the um, the number of trips that a project's generating doesn't. Uh, hit a certain number and if it does, we take a closer look at it to see what the impacts will be on our streets and intersections. Uh, very similar to the Subaru expansion that we had, we wanted to make sure that that wasn't causing a lot of trips. Um, congesting uh the area and it didn't hit the thresholds.
And is that the primary thing that triggers that closer look is looking at the number of trips?
Yes, that's, that's the first start, first step.
And, and that's, we base our traffic impact fee based on that, that increased in, in peak, uh, peak hour trips.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much to Fatima, thank you very much, John and Craig, of course, that was very educational. Um, if you wanna continue on with your update?
Absolutely, let me see where I am. Um. Just a few announcements and updates, um. We will be um having, I, I think we were provided with a flyer regarding our, our Leadership Academy. If you haven't been through the Leadership Academy, it's a, it's a great opportunity to learn um. More about what the city does, more of the opportunities that are available in the city, it's a, it's a seven week program. We actually do two Leadership Academies, it is a program, uh, we have won actually a couple of awards uh for this program. We have a youth academy and we have an adult academy, seven weeks, we have different topics uh that we cover regarding city government. Different uh, different things that are going on in the, the community, how to get involved, how to be a leader. Um, we're, so we spend seven weeks teaching residents how to, how to be engaged and, and participate in their, in their city. So it's, it's a great program, uh, we have probably close to five hundred MAP leaders at this point. Uh, this falls under our Monrovia Area Partnership or MAP umbrella. Um, again, it's a, it's a great program and um, you know, you can meet new, uh, new Monrovians. Um, it is not just for Monrovia residents, we do, you know, anybody can, can join. Uh, we have actually had a number of um, our MAP leaders come from, from the unincorporated area um, south of us. So uh, we're always happy to, you know, teach people how to get involved, so that's coming up. Um, if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to us, but it starts in September, uh, in October and then we do a big graduation in, in November. Um, also, um, next month, um, at the council meeting on the sixth, uh, we will be doing. A um, presentation to the city council, uh, giving them an update on our inclusionary um ordinance. Um, and having a discussion and getting, we're not gonna be talking about the ordinance per se, but just sort of talking about here's what an inclusion ordinance is. Um, getting direction from the council on how they wanna proceed. So if eh, any of the, we would invite any commissioners, if you wanna attend that meeting, or you can, you know, you can watch it uh live too, they do, it is streamlined, but. Um, eventually this will come back to the commission, but I think we'll get good, uh, that'll be a good discussion at the city council. Um, on the sixth, so just wanna bring the, that to the, pardon? August sixth, yes. Um, just wanna bring that to the commission's uh attention.
And then what would be the plan after that? So that's like in kind of an introductory meeting for the council and then the path forward next is to draft?
So based on the direction that we get from the council, we'll guide which, where, you know, where we wanna go, how they, how they wanna. Have us proceed on that. Um, and then finally, um, we have our commission assignments, so every year, uh, we have. Uh, some eh, extracurricular activities for commissioners to participate in. Uh, the first is the Board of Appeals, uh, the Board of Appeals is a, a body that is a subset of. Both the Planning Commission and the Historic Preservation Commission. And they review um, any appeals to our technical codes, so that would be in our Title seventeen, our building codes or our file codes. Um. In the five years that we've had a Board of Appeals, we have had only one appeal and then it was withdrawn, so we have, you know. I, I take that while we're doing good, we're doing good work if, if we're not having appeals, but we, we are obligated to have a Board of Appeals. And they are a brownout body and they do meet every year, so we have at least one meeting. Um, currently. Um, we have Commissioner Austin, uh, Scheffler and Vishani on the, the Board of Appeals. There are requirements um for the Board of Appeals, they do meet those requirements, so unless the commission um would like to do something else. We would recommend that those three commissioners continue on the, on the, doing the hard work on the Board of Appeals. Um, and so if that's the consensus of the commission, then no action is needed.
So is that anyone who'd like to discuss or? Come to a different conclusion?
It's, how many years, a couple of years and a couple of meetings, and we got close.
We did get close.
We got, we got close, we were excited, we're like, this is gonna be, and they, and they resolved it at the eleventh hour, which is, which is an appropriate thing. That, that's not a bad thing.
Okay, yeah, so hearing, hearing no other discussion or recommendation, otherwise I think we're happy with the status quo.
Okay, and the other um, the other assignment is a, a liaison to the um. Actually, it's a voting member of the Art and Public Places Committee. This is a committee that uh helps administer our Art and Public Places Fund, we have a Art and Public Places fee. Which is one percent of the building valuation, that's applied to every project over a million dollars. Um. And either the, the developer can choose to do their own art equal to that amount. Or they can pay an in lieu fee and that goes into our art fund and then we do all sorts of other fund projects uh with that fund. Um, the committee is made up of a member of the city council who serves as the chair. Um, Planning Commissioner, Historic Preservation Commissioner, Community Services Commissioner and an at large uh resident who is appointed to that committee. So every year the commission uh chooses someone to cer, to represent the Planning Commission. Uh, Commissioner Chief has served on the committee for a while, but it's up to the uh commission's pleasure whether or not uh, if you want to continue. Um, with Commissioner Chief or if you wanna rotate the position, so um, that, is that the pleasure of the commission?
So, I, I don't know if you can self nominate, but I was looking at that and I would love if, you know, if it's the pleasure of the body to, to take that on. Cause it's just a year, right?
It would be, yeah, so you.
Every year it changes, yeah, so I. Throw that out there to the group.
Yeah, I think Commissioner, no.
I'd like to, to uh move to elect uh Bill Chief.
Okay, so uh.
We need to vote.
I do have a, a motion um for electing Bill Chief. Um, I think we can take a roll call vote on that and then.
You, you would need a second.
Eh, if I get a second?
A second for, for just.
And then if there's another motion, we can handle that afterwards. Um, so we have a motion and a second, can I take a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner.
Question, Bill, Bill, you, you want, would you?
I'd be happy to continue to serve.
Okay.
Commissioner Austin?
Yes.
Brown? Get abstain? Scheffler?
Yes.
Chief?
Yes.
Sahara?
I'm gonna abstain. All right, so with a.
The motion carries.
Of three, yeah, and two abstentions, or three in favor and two abstentions, the motion carries. So that means we'll have Commissioner Chief continuing to serve on the Art and Public Places Committee.
All right, and um, just one other announcement uh to our Board of Appeals uh. Members, uh, the next Board of Appeals is scheduled for August tenth, we do not have any appeals, so this will be the annual meeting. We will reorganize, reorganize, adopt the minutes from the last meeting and it's probably gonna be about it. Um, that is all of my updates, um, I'd be glad to answer any questions of the commission at this time.
Just different, the other award winning program, the YES program, do you get the young people coming through the Planning Commission? Or the Planning Department, when, when, when the youth come through the, the youth employment?
We, yeah, every department has at least one, um, YES intern, April is our mentor. Um, in the Community Development Department for our YES interns, so um, we have a very sharp young lady that's uh working for us right now. And April's done an amazing job. Teaching her all the wonderful things that public service has to offer.
But that paralleled with the, with the Youth Academy and the Residential Academy, it's kind of a cool program.
Yeah, you, the YES program is, is amazing, in fact, it's interesting, we've got two, two of our staff, actually our former YES interns. Um, so again, it's, it's been a great program for, for the, for the city.
All right, um, do we have any other reports or announcements or requests from any other members of the commission? I just also wanted to congratulate the city staff and the city council and the residents on the Monrovia All America City win. Uh, that was fantastic news, we saw the unveiling of the banner on the library at the fireworks show. Uh, which was also a fantastic event that I was able to attend. Um, so congratulations to all who were involved.
It was a team of thirty eight thousand.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, yeah, it takes all of us to, to make this place the special place that it is. Um, okay.
Just the other, one thing, the neighborhood treasures up in the.
Oh, yeah.
Pad Ostray, that was really a, eh, an interesting unveiling and I learned so much about a person I did, I thought I knew a little about and. The magnificent work, very motivating, cool little treasure up there and is there any more planned or is that?
So we have um, are the Gutierrez Neighborhood Treasure that has been under construction for a long time. Um, it is almost done, the artist is gonna be out there this weekend finishing it. Um, there's a number of delays, but we're just excited that it's coming to a conclusion, so.
Is that the one right in front of the?
Museum.
Uh, right in front of the historical museum?
So we'll be doing a, a celebration on that later this year and then we will be taking. Uh, we've got two more treasures that will be in class of two thousand and twenty five. Um, that will be taken through the process um, beginning of next year. So our, our goal is to do two a year.
All right.
Curiosity.
Oh, turn on your mic.
Cities in California that got that uh, the great, uh, All American City Award? Are we the only city, city in the state?
I think we're the only city, but I don't. I don't know, I don't remember.
I think we were the only city in California, there was at least a couple other, at least one I can remember, Oakland. Maybe one other. Maybe one other, or finalists this year, but I don't remember any others in California that won, the finalists, yeah.
One, one of, one of ten in, in the country. Pardon?
Have we heard from the governor yet?
I don't, I don't know. I don't think so. He's been kinda busy.
All right, all right. Um, thanks again to city staff. Thanks to my fellow commissioners. And, uh, just a reminder, our next regular meeting is scheduled for August fourteenth of this year. And, uh, this meeting is now adjourned at, uh, eight thirty-eight P M.
That's nice.